All right. Good afternoon, everyone. This is, uh, welcome to the Palmdale City Council meeting. Successor Agency, Housing Authority, Industrial Development Authority, Airport Authority, Civic Authority, Finance Authority, welcome. Let's go ahead and get this meeting started. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and let's start with the roll call. City Clerk.
Mayor Bishop.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa.
Here.
Councilmembers Olson.
Here.
Bettencourt.
Here.
Alakon.
Here.
And Commissioners Frankusain.
Here.
And Vats.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move to, uh, item number three. That's gonna take us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Pro Tim Loa, can you lead us in that?
Yes, sir. Hands over your heart, and I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence, I'm sorry. Should've said that again. For our troops and our immediate responders. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right, so we have a couple of presentations. Item number four point one is gonna be declaring Black History Month. So it's, uh, Black History Month, February twenty twenty-four. The theme for this year's Black History Month is African Americans in the Arts. The theme provides an opportunity to gain a deeper understanding of African American history by highlighting their contributions to this country through creativity, resilience, and innovation of all art forms, including music, dance, theater, visual arts, and literature. The diversity of our communities enriches us in so many ways and strengthens this nation. We commend the heroes, pioneers, and leaders who have helped us push the needle forward. So I think it's no secret that Palmdale is a very diverse community. We actually rank, uh, one of the most diverse communities in the nation. If you look up City of Palmdale, you see that we are incredibly, uh, diverse population, and that's no accident. And we work well together, we play well together, and I think that's something to really be proud of. So that's our presentation for, uh, declaring Black History Month, and we have one more, four point two. We are going to declare, uh, National, uh, February twenty twenty-four, National Cancer Prevention Month as well. According to the American Association for Cancer Research, the federal government estimates that nearly two million Americans were diagnosed with cancer during twenty twenty-three. And that, and that more than six hundred thousand people died from their disease. Research shows that more, more than forty percent of these cases, and nearly half of the deaths, can be attributed to preventable causes: smoking, excess body weight, physical inactivity, and excessive exposure to the sun, amongst other things. Cancer has affected almost every family and is still the second most common cause of death in the United States. During National Cancer Prevention Month, we urge everyone to join our efforts to help prevent cancer by raising awareness about the risk factors, promoting regular screenings that can save lives, investing in research, and by investing into ourselves. We have somebody on our council that has gone through that, and if you wanna say anything, I'd like to give you the opportunity.
Um, prevention is so, so important. Never miss an exam. Um, and just so you know, I never did miss an exam. They missed it on my exam. Um, but had they caught my cancer early, I wouldn't be at stage four now. If you even suspect you have cancer, if you've never been checked for cancer, if you get a genetic check done and you find that you carry a cancer gene, I, I urge all of you to get, to get checked, because it could save your life, or at least extend your life as long as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Bettencourt. We're lucky that you're okay and you're still here with us.
Of course, I'm good.
That's right. Okay, item number four point three. This is gonna be a presentation update from Economic and Community Development Department, Planning and Building and Safety Divisions. Staff. Hi, Brenda.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brenda Magagna. I oversee the Planning Division, which includes the planners and buildings, um, sorry, uh, business license. Tonight, I will be giving an overview of the role of the Planning Division within the city, highlight some of our accomplishments, and go over what we have to look forward to this year. City planning is a relationship between people and the environment. It helps shape where we work, play, and live. Within the last year, this council introduced what we call best goals, which stands for building culture and community, economic vitality and innovation, social unity, and transportation and infrastructure. You'll see that these goals are directly related to a few of the key goals within the general plan that we will be touching on this evening: housing, job creation, transportation, aerospace, Palmdale Boulevard, and sustainability. Our city's general plan, as we've come to know, is a living document that outlines the city's long-term version, and we have the flex- flexibility to adjust that as necessary. In twenty twenty-three, we issued approximately twelve hundred business licenses, processed a thousand planning applications, ranging from over-the-counter approvals to larger comprehensive developments, adopted four environmental and, uh, environmental documents consisting of two environmental impact reports, which were visual, or about this thick, and two mitigated negative declarations. In twenty twenty-three, we approved a hundred and fifty-one single-family residences, two hundred multifamily units, and a facility for foster youth known as Together California. In twenty twenty-four, we are working with various developers to entitle two master-planted developments, also known as Quill Valley and Falcon Glen, which include approximately fourteen hundred market-rate homes. We should also begin to see some progress on continued buildout of Anavertie and Ritter Ranch. Additionally, we are working with Revela Holdings to develop an additional tract with a hundred and ninety-one affordable units. We are still working with our SCAG grant that will entitle three hundred and thirty units. The winter shelter is underway to provide twenty additional units, and these are just some of the housing developments that we have going on in twenty twenty-four. In compliance with state law, we were ahead of the curve by making conceptual ADU elevations available to the public. We provided three different floor plans and architectural styles compatible with the Palmdale landscape. In addition, we have updated our website to include easy-to-use handouts and have been working towards having them translated to Spanish. Some of those handouts include information regarding ADUs, walls and fences, Senate nine bill, Senate Bill nine law, and development processes. Job creation and aerospace. In twenty twenty-three, we approved fifty-six hundred square feet of commercial space and two point three million square feet of industrial space to support the local economy and specifically the aerospace industry, with the idea of keeping people off the freeway and have high-paying jobs available to our residents. In twenty twenty-four, we anticipate an additional three point six million square feet of industrial space. The city of Palmdale presents a unique opportunity in that we have, the, uh, we have available land to continue to facilitate growth and develop, whereas most other cities are challenged with the built environment. Transportation is an important aspect of our city, and with the development projects listed earlier, it is our job to facilitate growth and land use patterns that allow for expansion of public transportation, such as high-speed rail, bright line, and expansion of our own public transportation systems. Within the general plan, we have goals and policies that align with the acquisition of Palmdale Boulevard. By implementing more mixed use along the corridor to invite a variety of uses that will attract a combination of live-work areas and activity at the street level that will in time implement change. Lastly, as I mentioned earlier, the city of Palmdale is unique for a number of reasons, but having available land presents challenges for the development community. We host Development Advisory Board meetings twice a month, where we evaluate development projects at the early stages of design. We invite our local partners to participate and provide feedback. Those local partners include, this is a long list, LA County Fire, Plant Forty-two, Edwards Air Force Base, Southern California Edison, Air Quality Management District, LA County Water Works, Palmdale Water District, and Waste Management. This ensures that we're facilitating sustainable development and streamline the development process as much as possible, but it also helps us work together to resolve some of our local water and power issues. Typically, development projects begin with the Planning Division before they start working their way through Plan Check Process with our Building and Safety Division, so with that, I will invite our building official, Brian George, to give us an overview of Building and Safety.
Thanks, Brenda. Hello, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As Brenda said, I'm Brian George, the building official. Tonight, I'll be giving a brief overview of the Building and Safety Division's role in development process. Building and Safety is most known for permits, inspections, and such, but we play an essential role in many aspects of the development process, ranging from anything from your basic residential to your more complex industrial and commercial projects. Our tasks include processing applications for building permits, working with outside agencies and the applicant to determine the necessary path forward. We work with applicants to review their projects and assess fees. Applicants and the payment process is available online twenty-four seven. Applicants have access to this anytime. We have in-person available assistance in the Development Services Lobby, and we have that both in English and in Spanish. We also provide laptops for those who may not have access in our lobby in the Development Services Building. Our team reviews plans and construction documents for compliance with, obviously, local codes and our state codes. We also offer expedited, expedited plan review by third parties. We work closely with architects, engineers, and designers to ensure the most efficient and effective, efficient, effective, and comprehensive plan assessment. Building and Safety Division has a team of six inspectors, including one supervising inspector. Not only do they conduct your average routine inspections of basic existing homes, existing buildings, but they also respond to emergency services, whether it be natural disasters or a call from our local first responders. We go out on fires. We go out as, at the request of LASD, uh, La, uh, La, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Sometimes cars go through buildings, so we respond. Two AM, four AM, we're out there. We also conduct rental registration inspections. City of Palmdale has a program where all rentals are to be registered. We do a basic safety inspection to ensure compliance with the basic, your basic safety, you know, your smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, things like that. As Brenda mentioned, the city's Development Advisory Board meets to discuss the project parameters, inform potential clients of various design aspects and how it could affect their future project. In addition to overseeing all of our plan reviews, our senior plan reviewer attends these meetings on behalf of Building and Safety and provides potential feedback for builders. Some twenty twenty-three statistics. Applications processed, we had a little over sixty-five hundred applications processed by our team of three permit technicians and one supervising technician. That's quite a number when considering they deal with, on the average, about a hundred phone calls a day, two hundred emails a day, and anywhere from twenty to twenty-five people at the counter. Customers at the counter get the treatment they deserve, so sometimes it takes fifteen, twenty minutes to help a customer, or, or more. So you can imagine processing all those applications with that size team is, is remarkable. We had a little over five thousand plan reviews, excuse me, five thousand plan reviews. As I said earlier, our senior plan reviewer, all of that traffic comes into him. He then works with third parties, or we take care of it in-house. We have a team of two in-house, and we have additional third parties. They have to keep up on everything from the Palmdale Municipal Code requirements to the ever-changing building code requirements, the changing legislative landscape as it pertains to ADUs, electric vehicle chargers, and such. And again, that's quite a, that's quite a, a volume for, for two gentlemen, and, uh, I, I commend them for what they do. We had a little bit less than twenty-five thousand inspections performed by our team of six. Again, these inspections are not always just during business hours. We can get a call at two AM. We can get a call at, uh, you know, eleven o'clock at night on a holiday. I was recently involved in one of those, uh, on a holiday, so, you know, these guys go out, they have about fifteen inspections a day. Some of them are, are fairly routine and simple. Some of them take a lot of time. You can imagine a four-story hotel and all the different aspects that go into that. We had little, we had seventy-six ADUs that were given a certificate of occupancies. These include not only the detached, but also the, the JADUs or the junior ADUs that are attached to the home. Common would be like a garage conversion type of thing. And then multifamily and single-family, we had a hundred and ninety-seven. We had a hundred and ninety-six single-family and one multifamily given a certificate of occupancy in twenty twenty-three. Some projects that were completed in twenty twenty-three. This is, uh, Juniper Grove. This is on Avenue R and Division. It's a hundred and one units, and the substantial completion was twenty twenty-three. This doesn't need any introduction, I don't believe. Late December was given the certificate of occupancy and traffic commenced. And happy hour. This is across from, uh, the Red Robin Restaurant in our, uh, Elm Valley Mall. That was, again, late December of last year. Coming in twenty twenty-four, this is a project, a hundred and fifty-one units, that is located Twenty-Fifth Street East and Avenue Q twelve. The project at Avenue Hammond, Tenth Street West, Trader Joe's. They are doing grading work, and we are reviewing their foundational drawings as we speak. Substantial completion on the first building is said to be somewhere in the fall of this year. This is the, uh, Wood Springs Hotel, Avenue O eight and Tenth Street West, approximately, next to the credit union. Uh, they have a estimated completion date of June of this year. And that completes my presentation, so if there are questions, staff's available for questions. I'm ready for questions.
Well, I just wanna commend the, uh, economic development team, planning, um, my hat off to, to the whole staff. You guys are doing a fantastic job at, um, making sure our city's headed in the right direction, from bringing businesses to here to making sure that, that permits are getting passed, that ADUs are getting approved. And, uh, I know it's not an easy job. I know that there's not a lot of staff, but I appreciate your team and everything that, um, that you guys are doing to make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, before I close.
Do you have a brief?
Yeah. Hi.
Hi.
I, I just wanna also say thank you to both of you for your presentations, um, but specifically a question for you. You mentioned that there is a rental inspection program within your division. Is that, uh, it, just because I'm curious, is that for residential rentals? Or does that also include home share programs like Airbnb properties and that, that kind of?
Currently, the municipal code says the only exemption to that program would be the hotels and motels that are subject to the transient occupancy tax. There is some discussion as to the Airbnbs. Where are we gonna go with this? At this moment, again, this is one of my, this is the hard part of my job.
We've had discussions. We've had discussions. There's currently nothing on the books for that, and, you know, it hasn't gotten there. This is a high tourism area, but we're definitely in the works. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So let's move on to item number four four. That's gonna be Presentation of Measure AV Ad-hoc Committee Annual Report. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, or good evening. Good evening, uh, Mayor Bishop and, uh, council members. My name is Stephen Angerbrand, citizen of Palmdale since nineteen eighty-six. And this is Barbara Smart, citizen of Palmdale since two thousand. And we're part of the Measure AV Committee, and we're here tonight to present, uh, some of our, um, programs. On this slide, you'll see some of our team members. Cindy Garcia actually is our chair, and she's sitting here this evening, so that's nice.
On this slide here, you'll see a summary of pretty much the responsibility of the Measure AV Oversight Committee, and you can see, you can kind of read for yourself what, what we're involved in and what we're doing. Here's a list of our meeting dates for two thousand twenty-two and two twelve, two thousand twenty-three. Pretty self-explanatory here. And ordinance fifteen forty-nine is the ordinance that was established for the Oversight Committee, and it actually, um, creates some of the rules and regulations around it. And once again, if you're bored at night and you have something, a little insomnia, go ahead, read it. It's a must-read.
On this slide here, we present, um, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three revenues. Approximately twen- uh, twenty-two point six million dollars, um, and pretty much same amount each year. On this slide here, it shows some of the programs that we supported through Measure AV. Nine point six million in public safety, three point seven million in beautification and infrastructure, two million in programs, and fifty-eight, five hundred eighty thousand in, um, economic development. And actually, a really small portion, I actually figured out the percentage, about half a percent was spent on administration.
Let me talk about some of the public safety programs that we're involved in. Measure AV funding does help with low-cost spade and neutering programs within the valley. It also supports the Sheriff's Department and community safety programs.
And as a Navy veteran, I'm proud that, um, Measure AV was able to sponsor the Battlefield Cross Monument in Ponsonland Square.
And here's some images of the groundbreaking ceremonies for the second phase of the Yellen Park Improvement Program. And here is, uh, some images of the trucks and things that are going on with the graffiti abatement program. I can personally say I, in my neighborhood, we saw a couple of big blocks that got hit, and within two days, the graffiti was gone. So I am really proud to say that that is working. The abatement program support is working. And here's some pictures of the beautiful anti-graffiti boxes that we have all over the city. Um, I have my personal preference. I would imagine everybody does. I personally like the poppies the best, so. And here's some aerial vis- um, uh, images of different parks around the city that are being improved. As you can see, we're getting some lights and, uh, some new sod put in and, and different things going on within the city. So a lot of the Measure AV funds go towards that.
And in the holiday season, in the spirit of Christmas and other holidays, we had a holiday on the square here in Ponsonland Square, where over twenty-five hundred patrons were able to celebrate. And then also Measure AV sponsors our seniors at the Legacy Commons. We're over sixty thousand visitors a year, and, um, lots of great services are, uh, provided for our seniors.
And here you can see the statistics for the SAVE program completely speak for themselves. A lot of meals, food orders, food donations, hotels, unbelievable impact on the, the community. Many of our local businesses and eight of the, um, auto dealerships in Palmdale partnerships with the city to, um, promote the shop local and, um, created advertisements to promote their own businesses in partnership with Palmdale.
And then I know this is a favor of the mayor's. Our, um, our Measure AV funds help support the Palmdale Film Stage that's now in operation right up the street from City Hall here.
And lastly, we would like to thank you for this opportunity to present how the Measure AV funds are being distributed throughout the city and how of, much of a positive impact that they are doing for our community and our citizens. Once again, thank you very much for your time.
Can I say something, Mayor?
We'll start on this end of the IAS.
I, I just wanted to thank you both for what you do and for the entire committee, because what you do is not easy. I know it's a lot of stress, a lot of pressure, um, and I just wanted to thank you for, for donating your time to do this. Uh, it's, it's not an easy task, and sometimes it's very complicated. Sometimes there's a lot of stress, and you take time out of your, your personal life to do this, and I truly appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, I can't, uh, improve very much on Ms. Bettencourt, but, uh, you know, you, you take time to serve the entire community, and, uh, that's appreciated by everyone on this council. And, uh, for the time you invest, you're not compensated, except in good spirit, so thank you again.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Should I just say ditto? I'll go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, there's no doubt we all share the same sentiment. I just wondered, do you miss me?
Yes.
I miss being there. Thank you for everything.
We can make you go back.
Okay.
Yes. We enjoy you on this.
You're not going anywhere.
Yeah, to, I just wanna echo the, the appreciation for all of the service of the committee members and to you, sir, for your service to our country. Uh, I do appreciate the report. I think this is more directed to staff, because I know that staff worked with you in developing this report. Um, you provided information, this is an annual report, on the overall expenditures in twenty twenty-three. What's included in the report are aggregate, aggregate numbers for like public safety, so it's nine point six, and so big numbers. Um, I think moving forward, I would be interested in seeing some more line item, um, detail specificity on what exactly was included in economic development and community programs. Um, so maybe an additional slide for each of the, the big, the big columns. So what, what did we cover with nine point six million in public safety? What did we, what community programs did we, did we, did we, uh, fund for the two million in economic development? It's almost six hundred thousand. Was that for the auto mall? Was that for small businesses? I just, I, I think it would, it would be helpful to know a little bit more detail.
We'll, we'll get you some more information on that and then share it on our website as well.
Right. No, I'm, I, I have the information. I, I've seen it. I'm just saying to be incorporated into the annual report, which is then publicized. I, I can find it in our budget, um, but I think the public, uh, I think for, for the public edification, for public purposes, we should be transparent as to where this is, city taxpayer dollars. Um, they should know exactly where the money went. Um, I also have a, a follow-up.
I think we'll get you more information on this, and, and I think we try to keep it brief, because we don't wanna bombard the public with all the numbers and line items, and we didn't want the staff here. But, but in this, in the name of moving forward, we'll get you some more information on that.
I don't need this. It's not for me.
It was just merely supposed to be a presentation and not more of an, you know, a discussion.
Councilmembers are entitled to the opportunity to engage with any person who comes before the council, and we've historically always offered and afforded council members the opportunity to ask questions of our presenters. I really don't know why this is becoming an issue and why you're trying to cut me off when I'm trying to speak.
It's just merely a presentation.
I, I understood, and I'm merely making a suggestion moving forward. I also have a follow-up question, since we're talking about the Measure AV Committee.
This is, this is a presentation, so with, uh, with the consent of count, with the council and the board, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward, but we'll get you the information.
So you're not gonna allow me the opportunity to ask a question? Really, Austin? Quite frankly, the, the, the Code of Conduct doesn't even allow you to do that. Section five D doesn't allow you to unilaterally, uh, limit debate, and I find it quite ridiculous that you're trying, I'm just asking.
This isn't a, this isn't a Code of Conduct thing. It's, it's a presentation, but if you'd like to answer, ask a question, I'm more than willing to ask your question.
Thank you. Um, to staff, uh, I've had the pleasure of, um, attending several of the past Measure AV meetings. I am aware that, um, the committee has taken the time to develop an ad hoc, ad hoc committee and prepare a memorandum, uh, to be transmitted to the city council. That was adopted January thirty-first. Uh, it includes some, some, um, key recommendations that I think are, are important for the council to hear, so I'm just wondering when you guys anticipate bringing that before the council. To staff.
So we'll have staff report back on that, 'cause I don't think they're ready to have an answer for that just yet.
Do you have any idea when it'll come before us? And the reason why I'm asking is because the, the, the recommendations in that memo are time-sensitive. They pertain to the, the budgetary process and their role in the budgetary process. The budget, uh, is gonna be presented to us right around the corner in May, and so I just would like to be able to have the council consider, uh, what, what the.
And so I just would like to be able to have the council consider what, what the very thoughtful recommendations of the Measure AV Committee before we enter into a new budget process.
So that memo has been circulated with the council members during their one-to-one briefings, and we will be looking to provide an update at a future council meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. All right, city manager, it's gonna take us to our next city manager, do you have any items to pull from the agenda? Okay, moving on, city clerk, please read the public comment Code of Conduct into the record, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A Code of Conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by the other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
All right, thank you. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor. And council, we have Ravell Walker. And the item is six point two.
Uh, is that person here?
Ravell Walker, item six point two.
Why don't we move to the next speaker then?
Okay. It looks like these items, Mayor, are non-agenda items. The rest of the speaker cards that we have? No more speaker cards for this section.
So moving on, can I get a, a motion to wait for reading resolutions? Voice vote, please.
I moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Grant Low, a second from multiple seconds. Uh, all signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Showing none? All right. So commissioners, would you like to pull any items from the joint consent calendar?
So. Well, before we do that, Mayor, I'd like to ask a point of order to you. Can you please explain to me why our full city budget and our city comprehensive financial reports and all of our successor entities, derivative entities are on the housing authority budget?
Okay, I remember we had that discussion last year, so I'm gonna defer to the city attorney and or city manager, whichever, whichever one he feels more ready to respond to that.
They're on a joint budget, or a joint item? They're both interrelated, it's entirely proper, you don't have to separate them. The actions will speak for themselves as far as approval. It's up to the council if you want to proceed or bifurcate them, but there's really no need to.
May I, may I follow up? Because I find that to be an interesting position of the city attorney because in an email dated June twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, he very clearly said that adopting the budget as a unified action rather than a bifurcation is incorrect. We, the Housing Authority Commissioners have the authority to vote on the Housing Authority budget. They do not have any authority to vote on the citywide budget, I think that's pretty clear.
And I believe that's fully understood. They have no jurisdiction to vote on the city budget. They have the jurisdiction to vote on the Housing Authority budget, doing it as a group. You can consider their vote surplus as to the city because they have no jurisdiction. It can be done either way. For efficiency, staff takes it together. If you want to make an issue of it, feel free.
I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and trust the legal advice of our city attorney, he's been a minischool law for forty years.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the joint consent calendar of the city council, I have a motion.
Wait, if, if, first of all, I just, for the record, we have clear legal opinion from our city attorney that says that doing this is incorrect, the way that we're doing it. But if we're gonna proceed and have Housing Authority members vote on two consent items that include the city financial reports and the city mid-year budget adjustments, okay. Again, for the record, that is improper, but I would like to pull both six point one and six point two because I've got questions.
Well, I believe we can make the motion.
We had a, we had a motion.
And then we can have a discussion after that.
Yeah, so we had a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion second? So.
And now discussion.
Yeah, now we'll have discussion. City attorney, I want to make sure what it is we're doing is absolutely okay and will not get the city in trouble at any point whatsoever with the action we're taking regarding voting on the budget tonight.
These are procedural issues that are in the council's control. The context from the, the cited email that's been raised was, does the group decision invalidate either of them? If it was used to invalidate, that would be wrong. But again, as follow-up to that, when this issue came up last year, my final determination was that all of you voting collectively was fine because the clerk well-understood to sever off the surplus votes. Again, the Housing Authority votes did not go to the city and vice versa. Again, if somebody wants to make a deal of it, they can. I don't think legally it has any substance, but one can say whatever they choose to say.
So I'd like to just read the full, the full legal opinion into the record because it did not specifically pertain to invalidating an action.
It was not a legal opinion, it was an email.
I'm happy to share this opinion as desirable, is what you wrote.
So we have a motion, yes?
Yeah, it, it seems to me that we ought to have questions or any kind of discussion relevant to the two items. Anything else I think is not appropriate.
I think the mayor asked of the city attorney just for clarity purposes and make sure we're doing it all right. I just want to read this into the record. As to the ci, as to the Housing Authority, the Housing Authority Board is the seven members, five council and two tenants. The seven vote on the Housing Authority budget only. They should then adjourn the Housing Authority meeting and separately address the city and other city derivative entities. For example, the Library Board of Trustees, the successor agencies, et cetera. Why the tradition is to adopt the budget as a unified action rather than a bifurcation is unknown and incorrect. I'm happy to share this opinion as desirable. Bill?
And then after that, talking with the clerk and management, this has been a reliable tradition this city's done for a very long time. There is no legal infirmity to it. Sure, it'd be better to separate them, but doing it, appreciate your laugh, that's good. But to that end, there is no infirmity to your action.
Okay, I think we've had ample discussion on this. Uh, if we, yeah, if we call for the vote, should we break them out individually or should we vote on them?
But we, we have to have discussion on each item, right? Because I have questions on six one and six two.
It is your pleasure. You as chair structure the item. You've had a request to handle them separately. Again, that's up to you and the council or the authority or the whatever entity to decide if you choose to do it that way or take it as you've traditionally done it, as one loved.
I'd like to see if any commissioners or other council members have any other opinions or questions or if they're ready to vote.
I, I'm ready to vote because we've had multiple discussions during our briefings over the last several months over these things. So I think a, any questions that came up over the last couple of months regarding these should have been asked before this moment. So I, I am prepared to vote.
My comment is that the motion that was seconded was for both items to be voted on collectively.
Okay.
Right, but the, the rules of order that you all adopted afford me as a sitting member the opportunity to pull items for substantive discussion and debate. You guys are suggesting that you're willing to move forward without allowing me and affording the opportunity to have substantive debate on real important issues. This is the budget, this is mid-year budget adjustments, and there are issues in, in those budget adjustments and those recommendations that are of, of concern, and I would like to have a conversation about that.
Well, I feel like we've had ample discussion and the council's ready to vote, and we've been discussing this during.
We've had no discussion here.
We've been discussing this during briefings over the last couple of weeks. With all due respect, briefings you missed and weren't able to attend. So with that said, I'm going to call the question, we're gonna break out the two items.
No, 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 you're not gonna stop me from speaking first of all. Let me clear the record, and don't get carried away with the gavel like you did last time, try to cut me off. You are in a ceremonial role, you do not have unilateral authority to limit debate.
Please, please show some respect to the chamber and the city. We're gonna call the question, we're gonna vote on six point one and six point two individually, city clerk.
I, I'm gonna make a statement af, either before or after, so you let me know when you're gonna, when you want me to make the statement.
You can make a statement at the end of the meeting.
Appreciate, at the end of the meeting, no, that's ridiculous. I'm an elected official and I'm afforded the opportunity to speak.
I feel like we've given the entire council ample discussion just to discuss this, and we've all been briefed and we've all been going over the budget.
The briefings happen before we get our binders. We can't possibly review the, we can't possibly have substantive questions.
City clerk, go ahead and.
Before we get the binder, before we have the actual documents before us.
You want to vote it on individually?
Yes.
Okay, so we're on six point one, we have a motion and a second already in, and the same motion will go for six point two?
Yes.
Start voting, please. Motion passes. We will now move to six point two.
Thank you. We need him, there we go.
Yes, and now? Start voting. Motion passes.
So I'm just gonna make a statement, whether you like it or not, I'm gonna make a statement.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Mayor Proton?
Everybody else gets to be recognized, but I can't make a substantive statement on the, on the issues. One of the, so the public knows what they just run through without public discussion was an added in one point five million dollars to go to add a one point five million dollars in our budget to go to the Mark Center from our general fund taxpayer dollars.
Point of order.
These are all things people should know about, but you guys don't want, you guys want to hush the discussion? You guys want to hide things and sweep things under the rug?
We're not doing anything, everything's completely transparent.
And I'm gonna tell, if anybody asks me what my questions were, I'd be happy to explain them to them because we spent two, we, we sent two point five million over there, but it's not included in the report.
Mayor Proton?
And now you're suggesting that we send another, well, you guys just approved sending another one point five million there.
Point of order, we please not.
If our budget, our mid-year budget review includes the money that we promised our Dominic Masari kids, the soccer league, the lights, we don't know if it includes, okay, great, those are questions that.
You need, you need to take this, with all due respect, you need to, you need to follow up with staff. We're moving on.
I need to follow up with staff, you guys already approved the, the expenditures.
I'm gonna give Mayor Proton a chance to speak.
I don't think the public knows that you guys approved another one point five million dollars for, for the Mark Center. We got a one point six billion dollars in increased property, uh, property tax revenues, Palmdale property taxpayers.
Please let the Mayor Proton speak.
Their, their, their home valuations increased, so we, we saw a one point six rise in, in revenues.
Point of order, point of order, point of order, point of order, point of order.
What is going on? People need to know that.
First of all, that discussion has been had, and the funds that we're talking about are not going to the city of Lancaster. They're going to the Alamo Valley Fairgrounds, which is a state agency, not, not a city of Lancaster. In any event, six point one was the receiving file. We made a motion on it, fine, but I think that because of all the rhetoric, um, we get distracted. But six point one was the receiving file, six point two was approved.
All right, thank you, Mayor Proton. Item number seven on the consent calendar, we can move it all at once or we?
Yeah, I'm going to.
Oh, we're gonna, um, we're gonna adjourn the Housing Authority, I'm gonna let the Housing Authority members go. Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, so we're on the consent calendar, uh, would anyone like to pull anything or we can motion and move it all at once?
I'll make a motion to move it all at once? No, I, I, okay, you can have the motion to move it all at once, but I'd like to pull some items. You guys are gonna try and silence me on these items too?
Nobody's trying to silence, yeah.
You, you just did, uh, improperly and unlawfully, but we can talk about that later, so I'd like to pull.
City Attorney Curly, have I done anything unlawful tonight?
No.
Thank you.
By limiting my ability to engage in substantive debate on matters that we have to vote on?
Verified that I have done nothing unlawful tonight?
It seemed like, uh, Councilwoman Alarcon went on quite a length, she was, she spoke quite lengthily on the issues that she had concern with.
I, I, quite honestly, I couldn't actually hear what you said, but.
So would anybody like to pull anything?
Yeah. Did, do we have a second on that or just a motion?
I had a motion from Mayor Proton, I believe.
This is unbelievable. He's, okay, I, I didn't hear the second, I'm sorry.
Okay. Would you like to pull anything?
I would love to pull things, but before I pull things, I, I just want to make a general comment about our consent calendar and about our agenda. Everything has been put on a consent calendar, and as you've noted, all of that can be handled in one foul swoop with one motion without any staff reports for the public's benefit, without any discussion, without any engagement. There are some wonderful things that the city is doing that I think we should highlight and we should, we should inform the public by virtue of these meetings. So I just, I just wanted to say that moving forward, I hope that our meetings are not all one big lump sum consent calendar item. Again, that we have some new business items where we can hear a staff report and the community can engage and offer comment on those items. Having said that, I'd like to pull seven three, seven five, and seven six.
I'll move to approve the balance of the budget except for seven three, seven five, and seven six.
Okay, I have a motion. Second?
Second.
A motion, second, go ahead and vote in the computer.
Mr. Mayor, just so the public's clear, city budgets, including this, city agenda items, all of this is city business that the city manager is charged with doing. When staff looks at forming an agenda, there are items by state law that require a hearing, and those have to have a public hearing. Anything else is a judgment matter as far as what is routine city business. Every city in the state, every county in the state, you look at their agenda, they are full of consent items because they're viewed as routine business matters for the city. Now, you could say there is no routine business matter, that everything has to be discussed. That isn't a normal way of doing it, no city, no county does that. So I just don't want it to be thought that your ordinance, uh, setting up how agendas are done, your resolutions, your clerks work, your managers work, are in any way wrong, problematic or otherwise. This is so routine a, as to almost be something that doesn't even bear comment, but certainly one can. So I just don't, again, don't want anybody to think there's any impropriety in consent agendas. They are normal as the sun coming up.
And I never suggested there was impropriety in having a consent calendar. What I was suggesting is that there should be items that are set apart from the consent calendar. So if, for instance, if we're appropri, signing a check, we're issuing, authorizing issuing a check, that's a, that's a procedural technical thing that can be on a consent calendar. But substantive issues like the one we're gonna hear now, I think we should, we should afford the public the opportunity to hear.
Okay, thank you very much, so that's seven three we're moving on to, right?
Correct.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, um item seven point three is awarding a construction agreement with square signs for uh project number eight eight eight, street sweeping signage in the amount of three hundred and ninety one thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars for a term of a hundred working days. This project um is in conformance with a current ordinance of where we're doing street sweeping enforcement, and we went out to bid and awarded the project per public contract code.
Do you have any questions?
I do. Thank you for that report, this is an ex- a prime example of something that I think the public should be aware of, and we should have a vibrant discussion about. We are going to move, we're moving forward and going to implement a citywide street sweeping program. We're going to be putting up signs in every sector of our community. This is something that everybody needs to be aware is coming down the pike. We need to have a very clear outreach and education programs before um we uh move forward with enforcement. Uh so those are the, those are the type, I don't mean to take this out on you, I I'm just a little frustrated that that we can't have these kinds of 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 meaningful discussions that are really for the benefit of the community. Whether you like me or not, Austin, you wanna shut me up, the people deserve the right to know what is gonna, what is, what is happening in their city. If you wanna get out of here early because you've got, you don't wanna be here long, I'm here to work, and so I wanna, I wanna take the time.
It has nothing, I'm running, I'm trying to run profish, a professional meeting with respect. I'm trying to be courteous to all the people in the room that would like to have a moment to speak, who would like to enjoy the whole meeting, and I'm trying to run this with dignity, dignity and respect.
Okay, all right, well, so here.
If I may, we do have a comprehensive rollout plan that we have scheduled, that it will be an educational opportunity for the entire community during the course that the signs are being put up, then we will have a period of of just education before we ever do any enforcement. It will include warnings, it will include all of the things to make sure everyone is fully prepared, and this is not sprung on anybody.
Right, I remember we discussed it over uh during briefings, how the communications team is going to have an ample campaign throughout the city, knowing that
Right.
that these changes are coming.
So the staff report says that once the signs are in place, enforcement will be handled by the city's code enforcement, and so I, I think our city manager addressed some of the issues, I I I just want to be clear, I want clarity on the timeline um as to how we're gonna roll this program out. Are the signs gonna go up, and is there gonna be like a moratorium period where there is no actual enforcement? Are we gonna do outreach uh before the signs go up, or is that just gonna happen as a, as the signs are being installed? Um it also notes that um that we're gonna be doing the the education process through various channels, and it specifically says social media, newspapers, and community events. Um I don't know that all hundred and seventy thousand of our residents uh are on social media, go to community events, and read newspapers. Um I think this is such an impactful uh program, I I think it's, it's worthwhile to consider a direct mail to property owners advising them of which zone they're gonna be in, which, which day the street sweeping uh will be mandated and enforced. Uh so those were, that, that, that was the sort of the tenor of the questions that I have. If there's going to be some um great outreach plan developed, I would like to see it uh come back when it's fully developed so that we can chime in on it as it moves forward, and so that the public can chime in on on what, what would be helpful to them, we don't know everything, um.
Lynn, that's a lot of specifics, do you wanna maybe take the time and put a report together after you vote?
Well, actually, actually, the public works, we'll be putting up the signs, code enforcement will be enforcing and doing the comprehensive
Okay.
outreach, so I will work with code enforcement on that plan. Like city manager stated, a comprehensive plan will be going out. In our briefings, we did discuss going out and doing outreach prior or as the signs are going up. There is gonna be, you know, time for for people to learn and and know about this stuff. We are not gonna immediately go out and enforce the regulatory signage. So it, there will be a learning curve, and I don't think on on code enforcement side, will they maybe give two, two violations or or uh waivers or whatever, things like that, that's gonna be discussed, but I'll let.
So just to clarify, um we are putting together a comprehensive plan, as I mentioned. We have five months of hanging the signs throughout the streets. During that time, we will be doing all of the outreach, we will also create a flyer that we will put on every vehicle, should they even get a citation explaining it, not a citation, but a warning, hey, this is coming, you need to be aware. We can include a direct mail piece if that's, if that's something that we can budget for. Um we have an extensive plan that we are putting together for this, this is a, an administrative function that we know we need to do.
Thank you, I have a hundred percent confidence and faith in staff. I think, I think we're ready to entertain a motion.
Great, I just, so, so I'm loo- I'm looking forward to getting that back, I just have a technical question.
Let me.
On the report that's attached here, attachment to street sweeping days, my district, council district five, has four zones, C, L, I, zone C, zone L, zone I, and zone M. On your schedule, there is no, no, it's get, uh zone L is not included, so if we can
Okay.
go back and relook at it and and make sure that that my zone is included in that schedule.
Yes.
Mayor Proton?
Probably just.
So uh the signage uh is going to be a clear message as to when uh the streets are being swept in that particular area. Is that right, Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, and.
In your, in your staff report package, it is sign that says no parking both sides of the street from seven AM to noon on whatever day that.
On a specific day.
On that specific day.
And this is a, a, a common practice uh throughout Southern California. Uh many residents that are are living here now have lived in in other cities where this is practiced, and uh I don't think it comes as any surprise, um but the period of adjustment, the period of learning is very appropriate. But in the spirit of beautifying the city, keeping the s- the streets clean, I think this is a, this is a great effort. This is going to be obviously conducted throughout the entire city. All of the areas of the city are going to be given equal dignity as far as uh cleaning the streets under this program, is that right?
Yes.
All right, thank you, so with that, I'll move this item.
All right, I have a motion from Mayor Proton Loa.
Second?
I have a second from Councilmember Bettencourt, let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much, seven five. Uh staff, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bishop and Council, my name is Andrea Navarrete, I am the Community Compliance Coordinator with the Public Safety Department. Item seven point five is to adopt resolution number CC twenty twenty four dash zero one one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale authorizing the accept, acceptance of the California Department of Justice Tobacco Grant Funds and approving the related agreement. This will be the third successfully awarded grant with the California Department Justice Tobacco Grant Fund and will be continued enforcement and education through the Palmdale Municipal Code and zoning. Uh staff recommends that council adopt the resolution, and I'm available for questions.
This is the grant that Townsend got for us, right?
Correct.
Three years in a row?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, actually, since two thousand eighteen, we've had this grant.
I remember the first year we got that grant, it was a, it was a big uh excitement for the city to have those extra funds available to work with.
Yes, most definitely, sir.
All right, any questions from council?
Yes, thank you, so this is um another exciting program, good work that the city is doing that I think we should amplify. And we shouldn't hide it uh in, under the, a consent calendar. Let's talk about it, because you guys are gonna get two new code enforcement officers, or two code dedicated code enforcement officers over the course of three fiscal years to implement shoulder tap programs, uh and a variety of other enforcement things that that help to keep our community safe. It's remarkable, and I'm so excited um that it's, it's gonna continue uh in the the forthcoming three years. Um the report does reference that there are seventy eight licensed retail tobacco uh outlets in the city of Palmdale. I'm interested to know if if um staff could um provide me with um a geocoded map or a map that plots where the seventy eight uh retailer, we retailers are. I'm curious because um I wanna see if, if there are concentrations of them in any particular area, but I would also like that map to have plotted schools, uh like middle schools and high schools, because I'm trying to get a sense of the proximity of those tobacco uh retailers uh and our schools. I think maybe moving forward, we, I know, I don't know that we have anything on the books right now in terms of our municipal code about restricting, um having distance restrictions for tobacco retailers per se, but maybe it's something worthwhile and considering. So it would be really helpful if the team could put together a map um with the high schools and middle schools plotted and the seventy eight retailers so that we can get a sense of where they are, uh where they're concentrated.
Thank you for your shared excitement, um both of those filters, so to speak, um are available on our G I, GIS. You could um, you know, kind of select a filter, so to speak, of all of our tobacco retailers as well as the schools. Uh you mentioned uh feet limitation or proximity to schools, that's also outlined in our zoning code through the tobacco.
Wonderful, well, maybe if you could just he- either help me figure out how to pull up that kind of map, or if you guys could just develop it for me, that would be great, but I just, congratulations, and and I look forward to the implementation of this program, happy to move the item.
All right, uh Councilmember Bettencourt?
Do you consider a grocery store that sells cigarettes as a tobacco retailer?
It does, I'll land under that seventy eight retailers, yes, it's pulling all the tobacco permits within the city of Palmdale.
If that was to be mapped, the grocery stores and those types of stores would also be mapped.
Correct, like a, like Sam's Club, for instance, yes.
All right, I had a motion, do I have a second to move this item, second?
Do you have a motion and a second?
I have a motion and a second, city clerk, let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much, item number seven point six, this is the uh city's twenty twenty four state and federal legislative platform. Hi, Terry.
Hi.
You're up, good, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, I am Terry Weiss, and I am your city councilor, staff. For you this evening is item seven point six, which would be a motion to the twenty twenty four state legislative platform. I would like to say the platform provides direction for staff to coactively act upon the city's lines of identity policy priorities, and as a board, um the regional, state, and federal advocacy and community funding opportunities. Our advocacy team and our advocacy partners will use this platform to rally for citizens' causes or policies. Examples of city projects and programs included in the legislative platform include, but are not limited to programs, workforce development, financial assistance, mental health, domestic violence programs, um the High Desert Corridor, the Center for Transportation Excellence, and our uh grade separations at Entrovista Boulevard and Avenue, and just to name a few. Joining us this evening via Zoom are lobbying team partners, our state lobbyist Paul Gonzalez with Gonzalez and Son, and our federal lobbying team, I've Ben Golding with Townsend Public Affairs, who advocates for us on the House of Representatives side, and Riley O'Connor and Jed Buta with Lincoln Park, who advocate for us on the US Senate side. Our advocacy teams work with the city and lawmakers to sponsor, draft, and support legislative, legislative and regulatory measures and seek federal funding, and they are an amazing partner for us of the city. Uh this document was last updated in two thousand nineteen, and we're excited to recommend that the city council approve this uh twenty twenty four state and federal legislative platform, and I am available for any questions.
All right, thank you very much, yeah, this is something that we do every year, and the staff, consultants, council, input all the way through, right?
Yes, yes, so our state lobbying and our federal lobbying team um assisted with this along with our communications team and our management team.
Okay, perfect.
Uh Mayor.
Yes, yes, Mayor Proton?
Thank you. Uh one of the key things that's on here uh is the acquisition of Palmdale Boulevard from Caltrans, and
Correct.
Assemblyman Carrillo is already, he's already presented a bill.
Yes, Assembly Bill two zero eight two.
Right, and this is very significant, this is something that we've been discussing uh on this council now for several years. And uh i- it's key uh for the development of an issue that I think is really significant uh along Palmdale Boulevard, and that's wide stretches of vacant land that could be developed. And if we take control, I think that we'll have um a better hand in in developing Boulevard so that it becomes something that the entire city can be uh proud of.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think the, it's a thoroughfare now that's heavily traveled um by, by a lot of vehicles and and heavy trucks at times, and um so that impedes uh our ability to really do something with this, with this Boulevard, to make it uh, to make it something significant. Um there's a lot of issues here that I think are very important, and I think that uh you've scrutinized it along with uh staff, and and you've discussed this with council members as well, so uh it's a good presentation, I think it's a good agenda, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, anybody else?
Yep. Shocker, I have questions and and some um suggestions. First of all, thank you, Ms. Ias, I know this has been a long time coming, you put a lot of hard work uh into developing this, and I do appreciate um all that you've done. Uh there are a couple of things, I handed you, I did a red line of it, and you took a copy of it, and you incorporated some of my uh suggestions, others you didn't, so I'm going to raise those now um uh with the council to see if they'd be willing to incorporate those recommendations. The first one, I think is incredibly important that we include, um it is uh with regard to the transportation and infrastructure section of our uh legislative platform. Uh it doesn't include the Center for Transportation and Technology Excellence, the C T T E. This is a, an amazing project that we're looking forward to, pro- projected to create a hundred and fourteen thousand jobs uh and and have an economic impact of eleven point five billion dollars. It has been recently cited uh in the city of Palmdale. I wanna make sure that that is part of, I think in, we speak in unity about our support for the C T T E, and so I think it's important that we include that in, under our transportation and infrastructure uh section. Uh so I would suggest that we include um a, a line item for Center for Transportation and Technology Excellence, support all efforts to advance the establishment of the C T T E in the city of Palmdale. Um second, uh I'd like to add into the, um I'd like to suggest that we add uh into the Economic Vitality and Innovation um section, where we i- identify various industries that we support, we talk about film and tourism and a variety of other things. Um two, the city's uh two largest employers are in aerospace and defense industry, Northrop Grumman and Lockheed Martin. Um and we are no doubt a very proud aerospace and defense community, yet it's not reflected in this document. So I'd like to see us add um a, a, a section on that, but also specifically because before I was removed from the ABA QMD, uh my, my seat was, was, I was removed from my seat on the ABA QMD board because uh Austin didn't think I was capable of serving in that position. I was very actively involved in um litigation uh involving the AQMD uh in an, and the US EPA, in an effort to defend our aerospace and defense jobs in the Animal Valley. I wanna be sure that we are, have um the capability, if we include them in this, that we have the capability moving forward to, on a moment's notice, um uh issue a letter of support in, in, you know, to the feds or to whomever, to US Secretary. I know we sent one to the US Secretary Buttigieg uh of of transportation, but I I believe there's, Secretary of Finance is also involved. If we in the case need to send some, some, some stuff, uh I wanna make sure that's included in there. So I would recommend that we include a line for aerospace and defense industries that says support all action that supports, defends, and incentivizes the retention and expansion of the aerospace and defense industries in Palmdale.
If I may.
Sure.
Um yes, there are, there are certain things that um we did not include, so we are not so specific as to where it ties our hands to um advocate. So as far as the aerospace industry goes, that gets absorbed into exploring new industries, which falls in line with our high tech. So we wanna just be able to be a little bit flexible as legislation and um changes up on Capitol Hill that we have that flexibility as well, not to be so specific.
Okay, I just want, exploring new industries, they're existing, longstanding, and I wanna be able to make sure that we're, it's not just exploring new industries, it's defending the industries that are here.
It's develop a workforce in high-tech innovation, so um if something were to come along and we had a piece of legislation that we had to move on, that would be incorporated in that, in that area.
I just don't see how it would hurt to call it out, that we want, you know, anything that supports, defends, and incentivizes the retention and expansion of the aerospace and defense industries in Palmdale. Don't know that that would hurt, but uh it's, I'm, I'm submitting it to the council uh for their consideration. Also, as, as uh Count, uh Mayor Proton Loa referenced, the uh Palmdale Boulevard relinquishment effort that um we've been working uh steadfastly on, he noted that council member, I mean, former council member, now Assembly Member Juan Carrillo introduced A B uh twenty eighty two on that section, in that where it says uh Palmdale Boulevard.
Yes.
Um it, it reads support legislation and administrative efforts that seek funding for the acquisition of Palmdale Boulevard from Caltrans. A B twenty eighty two that uh Assembly Member Carrillo introduced does not have any funding implications. Uh, and it doesn't have any funding requests. So I just want, I know, and I know, we as a council want to be able to support. Um, send a letter of support for A B twenty-two, so I, I think, I'm just suggesting that we just strike. The language that says that seeks funding for, so that it's, it's more general and support legisla- led legislation. And administrative efforts for the acquisition of Palmdale Boulevard from Caltrans. It's broad enough. Limited only to matters of funding.
Yes, please.
The deadline to introduce legislation was February fifteenth. The language can be amended up until mid-March. So to get the placeholder in, it was submitted at is, but funding is part of the evolving language that's going to. Continue to grow through conversations. We do want funding. Caltrans has, uh. Promised certain projects that are already underway. We want to negotiate with them to make sure that they continue with those projects. If we're going to receive the Boulevard before they finish, we want to negotiate funds from them, so.
I agree. I just don't.
It doesn't say that.
It says only seek funding for. I, I just don't want to be restrictive in what we can, what we can score. Anything that supports getting Palmdale Boulevard back to us. It doesn't have to be restricted to, to, to have funding ties.
I, I had a lot of these same questions in my briefing, and we went back and forth for a little bit and changed some things and. I feel confident with the language that staff and the consultants and all the other input from the community that has put this together. Do any of my other council members have any questions or comments? And I understand why you guys left on language you did. So that way it encompasses the whole city and doesn't kind of pigeonhole us into one thing.
So wait, I wasn't done.
Well, I'm gonna give the other council members a chance to speak with all due respect.
Okay, but I want to be able to s- submit my recommendations to council, and then everybody can chime in on their response to them.
Well, I, let's just hear from some of the others, and then more.
This, uh, document is something that has been handed down year after year. I mean, it's, it, it changes with the times and the needs and, uh. And whatever the desires are, uh, for us going forward as a city. Uh, but every time that it's done, it doesn't mean that our hands are tied to the specifics of this particular document. It's left general, it's flexible, and, uh, we have the ability to have, uh, discord with, with our legislators at the. Uh, state and federal levels, and and that's what's built into this, right?
And yes, absolutely. And then I would like to add as well that anything that is not encompassed within this document. Um, there's probably pieces of legislation out there that we don't know that we did not cover in here. We would still, staff will still address those matters, and they were just being brought to the council instead of me proactively or staff proactively, um, making, um. Uh, ta- taking a position on legislation or to, or going after funding opportunities. Um, if there's something outside of these lines, then we would come back with to council for recommendations on how to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Mayor, if I might to, there's a certain art to constructing these, these sort of legislative guidelines and platforms. You've got some incredibly top-notch legislative lobbyists, that they're on Zoom, I'm not saying you need to hear from them. But they work with this daily. This is their bread and butter, this sort of analysis. They've looked at what's in here, deemed it broad enough. You don't want laser precise, you want broad flexibility. And to that end, your, your experts have looked at this. You've got three levels of experts, two at Washington and. One in Sacramento. Um, I, I think it's. Due respect to them, that they know what they're doing, they've gone through this at some length.
Multiple times.
Understanding the city's goals broadly and narrowly have recommended this. So I, I just want you to understand, this isn't some sort of loosely constructed document. You, you've got top-notch federal, state, and local lobbyists that have seen this and given it their blessing, so just understand.
So I'll go ahead and call the question. I think we have ample discussion. We'll call the question. We'll finish up this discussion and.
Can I? Sorry. I, I understand the point about keeping it vague enough that we don't get stronghold into commitments. For example, C T E falls under rail infrastructure. So it doesn't mention it specifically, but it is a part of development strategy to pre- prepare the local economy for project development. So I see how keeping it vague, uh, is works and satisfies that need. But in the spirit of keeping it vague, I'll support, um, Ms. Alarcon's, uh, amendment to. Remove the line that seeks funding. So on Palmdale Boulevard, support legislation and administrative efforts for the acquisition of Palmdale Boulevard. That keeps it more vague and more consistent.
Thank you for that. Really appreciate it.
Is that a motion?
Okay, but I'm not done yet. And I know you want to call for the question. You continue to want to cut me off, but this, this is. Uh, this is a document that's going to guide and direct our legislative efforts, uh, at the state level and at the federal level. And quite frankly, I, I appreciate the city attorney's comments, but I work on a daily basis and have for over twenty years worked with legislators. And in the legislature and in, in D.C. I worked in, I mean, I, so I'm very familiar with, with the, the processes. And, and what will be advantageous for us, uh, in, in developing this platform. So I, I appreciate his comments, but I too. Uh, I'm well-versed. Uh, Councilmember Olson, uh, works for a legislator. He also is well-versed in, in what this, uh, involves and entails. And the implications of this platform, which is why it's so important that we take the time to work through the language, because it has such. Um, wide-ranging, uh, impacts. So I will just, uh, follow up with my, my, they're, they're just minor, uh, recommendations. Uh, uh, that I already submitted, but they were rejected, so I'm submitting them to the council. Uh, uh, under social unity, uh, there is a section that says, uh, illegal drug prevention and treatment. Uh, I think that is, um, a, a little bit too specific. I would like to broaden it. To read substance abuse prevention and treatment, so that incorporates alcohol, uh, and other issues in there. And it, it specifies u- use of illegal drugs and legal drug misuse. Um, I just would like to keep it broad. In the, in the, in the spirit of keeping things broad, let's keep it broad. Substance abuse prevention and treatment. It's a simple one. Um, and then, uh, this one is, is, is substantive, and I just really. Was kind of taken aback that it's included in here. Under social unity, it says, support legislation providing for the expansion of laws. Allowing for increased guardianship control and health supervision of those with mental illness. Um, I don't actually ever recall having a substantive, uh, discussion amongst this council regarding conservatorships or guardianships. Um, I know that we discuss mental health generally, but we never, uh, discussed or came to consensus specifically on guardianships and conservatorships. This is a very tricky area for us to get into. I mean, it talk, you know, it involves, uh, personal autonomy and, and individual liberties. And someone's right to, to take or not take medications. It's a very complicated policy area. And I, I don't necessarily know why we would engage in that and why we should, why it's included in our, our legislative platform. I think that's really something that's. A matter of, for the county, you know, County Department of, of Public Health and Mental Health and the State, uh, Departments of Mental Health. I, I, I just, I would, I would suggest that we, uh, uh, delete that one line about conserve, uh, conservatorships and guardianship. Control. Um, those are my, my five recommendations. So one to include C T T E expressly. Uh, because I think it's so important, that project is so important, and yes, it does say, uh, support infrastructure, but. It, it, that one calls out the high-speed rail and bright line. I think C T T E is, is in and of its own, something else. It's a testing facility. It's not necessarily rail infrastructure. Um, and then, so that's, the first one is C T T E. The second one is, um, the aerospace and defense industries. Third one is, thankfully, Councilmember Olson, uh, agrees. Uh, in striking the language, uh, that seek funding, uh, and then also to, uh, broaden the language from illegal drug to substance abuse. And then, and then striking the conservatorship, uh, guardianship language.
I move to approve, uh, this item, uh, with the one change regarding Palmdale Boulevard to read support legislation and administrative efforts. For the acquisition of Palmdale Boulevard from Caltrans, leaving all the rest of it the same.
Okay, I have a motion from Mayor Protem Loa with that one amendment regarding, uh, Palmdale Boulevard. May I get a second? No second? All right.
Before, no, I just, let's continue the conversation then.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, here, no second, and I assume that that.
Guys, for lack of second, let's go ahead and continue.
The motion fails, so I'd like to introduce a motion to incorporate the five, uh, recommendations that I've, I've noted and outlined. I specific, I'll go through them again. Adding the Center for Transportation and Technology Excellence, adding, uh, aerospace and defense industries. Uh, de- uh, striking that seek funding under the Palmdale Boulevard, uh, provision, broadening the illegal drug prevention. To substance abuse prevention, uh, and striking the verbiage about, uh, guardianship and conservatorship.
Can I make a counter motion?
Yes, yes, you can.
So I, I'd like to make a motion to accept it, uh, accept her, her specific changes of the. We not having the financial part of Palmdale Boulevard and removing the guardianship. That would be my, my motion.
So that means don't put in C T T E and don't put in the aerospace and defense industries?
I think a lot of that's covered under tech, or at least that's what I've been made to be told from staff during my briefing.
I'll call for the question.
Okay, I have a motion. Second?
Motion, clear, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Approve the city's twenty twenty-four state and federal legislative platform to promote Palmdale's priorities and legislative initiatives. At the state and federal levels with amendment to remove stated language related to relinquishing of Palmdale Boulevard and. Can you tell me?
The, the issue of asking for money for Palmdale Boulevard.
So it's the, it's the, it's the language.
To, to strike the words that seek funding from the Palmdale Boulevard section as well as. As well as to strike the language, support legislation providing for the expansion of laws, allowing for increased guardianship control and health supervision of those with mental illness.
So.
Wait a minute, you, you're asking to strike that entire thing?
What, which word are you pointing at?
Uh, support legislation providing for expansion of laws allowing for increased guardianship and so on.
Yeah, I, I, I really think that that is a county issue. I don't think that's something that the city needs to be engaging in.
Okay, so we're gonna strike that and the language.
The funding.
All right, that's fine. Call for the question.
Okay, I'm gonna just read the motion with amendment to remove language. I'm gonna say related to Palmdale Boulevard. Stated by Councilmember Benton Court and Councilmember Alacan.
I, I'm just talking about.
That seek funding.
That seek funding, okay, okay. Striking language, okay, got it.
So we're really not gonna include the C T T E?
The consistency of it being vague.
But we include bright line, we include high-speed rail, we call those out, but we don't include C T T E.
Madam Trump, do you have the, do you have a motion?
Because those are actual projects with actual funding at the moment.
So the motion is going to be with amendment to remove language, the words that seek funding.
And the other portion is on, on homelessness and mental health, the second item that's under that, support legislation, et cetera. To remove that entire.
And remove language. That states.
Support legislation providing for the expansion of laws. Provision of those with mental illness and recognizing mental illness and addiction as a component of the chronic, chronic illnesses. That's going to be stricken.
I think it probably would be better to put the second bullet under homelessness and mental health. Okay, and. Remove the language, and let's put this in.
I'm sorry, can I make, uh, a recommended amendment to your question?
A friendly amendment.
I do agree that it. Support legislation funding provide programs targeting education preventment and treatment of the use of illegal drugs. I think there are some legal drugs that can be misused, and that should be included in the treatment and prevention. So I agree that that should say substance abuse instead of illegal drugs.
Will you amend your motion for that?
I'll make, I'll make the amendment.
And I will second along with that amendment.
All right, so we have those three changes to our legislative platform. Terry, you got all that?
I got it, thank you.
You're awesome, thank you.
Maybe have a walk?
We're working together.
The last bullet?
The, the last amendment would be to replace the, uh, the two words illegal drug with substance abuse. So it will now read substance abuse prevention and treatment. Support legislation funding programs targeting substance abuse, education, prevention, and treatment.
Who's that?
City clerk, you're just changing the words illegal to substance abuse.
Thank you very much.
All right.
And change the word illegal.
Illegal drug.
Thank you, to substance abuse. No takers on C T T E and aerospace and defense industry, huh? I mean.
I think that, I think it includes it too, right, Terry?
It's incorporated in there, just not specifically.
All right, so I believe we have a motion and a second.
And the first was Mayor Protem, and second was Councilmember Benton.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Start voting. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, thank you, Terry. You know, that wasn't a easy one for you. All right. Lot of moving parts in a city. That takes us to item number eight, council reports, announcements, requests for future agenda items. I'll go ahead and start to my left here. Councilmember Benton Court.
Um, well, I would just like to make a comment, if I can, and not an announcement, but I just wanted to thank our city staff, our. Emergency workers, our maintenance people, our public works, for doing such a great job during our last storm, that there was almost no damage to our city. Because they had prepped so well, uh, to prepare for the storm, and I just wanted to give a really big shout out to everyone who participated in, in helping with that event. So thank you all.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, um, there's been a lot of statements made, uh, here that. By voting on consent items, we're trying to, uh, not be transparent. All of these items are public. They're part of the, um, agenda that is published. Um, and the information is out there. When there's action to be taken, um, the city of Palmdale has very broad. Educational programs to instruct the people of the city, um, what is being expected with the changes that might be brought forth. And, uh, you know, the insinuation that we're trying to hide something is just so wrong. It, it's just so inappropriate. Uh, and, and the same thing goes for attacking, uh, the, uh, honesty. Of a fellow council member. There's, there's ways that those things can be done without having to, to do that. And, um, I just wanted to state that for the record.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to thank staff for all the hard work they do. We have an incredible city. We have an amazing community. And as we heard earlier from building and safety, we're short-staffed, like a lot of other businesses, school districts, water boards. But our staff does a good job with the people we have and the resources that we're dealt with. They run an amazing city. I have a hundred percent confidence and faith in the staff. And I know for a fact they're doing a great job running the city and leading us into the future. There's a lot of good projects going on in the city. And we, there's a lot of opportunity that lays before us. That's it? All right, Eric Olson.
I'm good, thank you.
All right.
Uh, thank you. Um, so first I just want to say thank you for, um, revising the structure of this item and the verbiage. Uh, and heeding my recommendation that, uh, it be properly agendized to reflect, um, uh, our rules of procedure that were recently adopted. So thank you for that.
Absolutely, we're, we're here to work together.
If only you would listen to me. If you only would let me talk, um, I think we could actually work together. It doesn't work when it's one-way and you're trying to keep me quiet. In any case, I've got two items that I would like to add to future, uh, agendas. The first one, um, um, is with regard to translation at city council meetings. I believe it's incredibly important that, um, all of our residents, all of our community, uh, is able to participate, engage, and understand. Uh, the work that we do here at the city council. Um, according to our recent census, over half of our population of a hundred and seventy thousand residents. Fifty-two point three percent of our residents speak English. Of our population of a hundred and seventy thousand residents, fifty-two point three percent of our residents speak English as a second language at home. Um, I've asked, uh, numerous occasions, uh, to implement regular translation at our council meetings. Um, unfortunately, that has not yet been implemented. What has happened is we've had to have volunteers sort of pop up out of the audience and. And translate and we all know that that translation is not always a hundred percent accurate, so I would like to add to a future agenda item. Um, a report on, on implementing translation for all future council meetings. So that's one. Do you wanna vote on, on that? According to the rules?
I don't, do we need to vote? Yes?
According to the rule, that's why how you guys blocked me last time because, uh, a city attorney said that we needed a majority vote in order for it to be on, on.
It has to be, um, a minimum of three to support it.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and vote.
So I.
Is this just a, a, a staff report back or to see what the, um?
Well, so I would move that we add to a future agenda item, um, a, a proposed action item to implement. Uh, trans, Spanish translation at all future council meetings.
Can we bring a report forward first to see what the?
But it would include in.
On something that wasn't specifically agendized.
No, it, it would be, it's, it's vote to put it on to the agenda. That's what he's saying, it has to be.
What's, what's the best way?
That was, that was only new and that was the only first time that it, that it was ever implemented was when he tried to block me from adding something to the agenda before.
Just to make sure we follow procedure, Mr. Curly.
Agenda without a vote, but now that's the process because you guys blocked, that's how he was able to block me last time.
Trying to block, I just wanna make sure we follow procedure.
Very clearly.
Well, it's good people can guess motives, but we'll leave that aside. For management of the agenda, your adopted process, the city manager is in charge of assembling the agenda. So a unilateral request from one council member to say, I want this or that. That can be disruptive to the manager's plans or organized approach to the agendas. So we want the council as a body to say, yes, we do wanna hear that, or no, we don't. It's just a tool for agenda management that the council will be presented with things. That they think of import to the city rather than just the, the individual whims of someone.
If we, if we explore it, do we have to put out like an R F Q or an R F P due to the, you know, because it being a contract?
That's, that would be something you'd decide in the future. Staff would come back and say. The issue's been raised about how we go about having translators.
Right, so the only thing right now is because, because it's agendized as proposed future agenda items. The only thing that will be voted upon now, um, is whether or not this council is willing to support that we have a future discussion and potential future action. On implementing translation at council meetings. It's just you guys support bringing it back, that's all.
Can I just say that I'm, I'm looking right now at our agenda and under the Americans with Disabilities Act, it talks about if you require. Um, certain disability related modifications, feel free to ask, we, we will provide. And then it says if you require oral translation, please contact the city clerk's office at least thirty-two hours before meeting, so we already have a translation. Policy in place.
We do have a translation policy in place. It has not, is, is in, in many instances been an impediment to some people and we've all been present to council meetings where. There are, you know, dozens of people who can't understand what is happening and, and can't. It's, it's for both our benefit, right? It's for the public to be able to engage with us and for us to be able to understand what they say. And for them to be un, able to understand our responses. I, fifty-two point three percent of our, of our city speaks English as a second language. Uh, at home. This is just, uh, uh.
Does this require a motion or a vote?
It's just to add it to a future agenda, that's all.
I make a motion that we get a report back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second, there we go.
It's really not that complicated.
Did somebody ever second that?
Yep.
Let's just do a voice vote.
Yes.
Okay, I can make a request?
Yes.
Uh, included in whatever report comes back, can we, uh, analyze what other cities are doing with, uh, large, uh, populations of, as. Containing English as a second language, whether they be Asian, whether it be any other language and Spanish, whatever, whatever language there is out there. Um, so we can see how this is handled in other cities.
Okay.
Council, we don't need necessarily a vote. I'm seeing heads shaking and consensus.
You have consensus. Yeah, let's take a closer look at that and then see what the impact is and, and what it's gonna take to get there. Alright, next.
Alright, second, um, this one is another very important matter, but I, I'm sure a sensitive one. Um, in order for us as council members to be able to do our job, we need to be able to have access, um, in, in order, to information in order to be able to make informed decisions. Um, there have been many instances where I have been denied access to, uh, information at the direction of city attorney Curly. Um, one specific, uh, instance, uh, that was ongoing. That is a concern and should be a concern to this entire council, but also to the listening public is my request to review. Um, the city attorney's billing records. I made the request several times. In response, he said, quote, I'm sending you nothing as you have no right to it. He later writes, you have no right, quote, you have no right to documents or billings because he said that I, quote, only. Sit in a policy role. To be clear, the city attorney's contract states in contract section twelve, ownership of documents. The firm shall maintain complete and accurate records with respect to costs, expenses, receipts, and the firm shall provide free access. To the representatives of the city, to such books and records, shall give the city the right to examine and audit said books and records. And shall allow inspection of all work data, documents and so forth. By refusing to provide those billings, I believe, uh, that our city attorney is in breach of contract. I mean, why not show his billing records? We pay his bills, but we can't see the work, uh, that went into, to, to those, those monthly bills. Um. Uh, and, and, and then what's even more, more appalling is that he said that I'm not allowed to have access to those billing records. As a council member, but go ahead, you can, uh, you can submit a public records request and get the documents that way, but you're not, you're not likely to get them. In, in that instance either, and I have that in writing as well. So I did, in fact, when I was denied several times, um, uh, my request to get the billing records. I submitted a public records request for those billing records and detailed, um, you know, uh, outline of the work that went in. To his accountings and, and so, and so forth. Didn't get any of it, uh, the only thing I got were cancelled checks. But what that actually did provide me information on was how much we are paying, um, uh, this city attorney. And to be clear, one cancelled check in one month, a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. In Sep, that was in May, one check for a hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. In, in July, another check for a hundred and three thousand dollars. In September, two checks totaling two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. November, ninety-two thousand dollars. I think it is impor, imperative. Those are astronomical numbers. I think it is imperative that we as a council. Uh, have the opportunity to review what work goes into two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of legal. Legal advice and legal, legal work product in the course of one month. Uh, I'm not sure that my colleagues were even aware that he was being, uh, 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 that, that his firm was being paid, that, that, uh, those large amounts. Uh, monthly, uh, he, he, he actually in his email, he said, he refused to give me the documents, he said, and you can, quote, take it up with the council. So that's exactly what I'm doing. I want to request and move that we add to a future agenda item. Uh, whether it, you know, a, a future agenda item, whether or not we are going to demand that the city attorney disclose. His financial records so that we can review them, uh, properly.
Well, Mr. Mayor, there, there's a whole lot of twist and spin there to unpack. Uh, the law is clear that attorney billing records are confidential. You do all sit in a policy role. You are not city managers, you are not staff, you are not those that have rights to. Including anybody's personnel file. Everything she quoted for me is absolutely what I said and I will say again. She has no right to request this. This is, as I said, a decision for the whole council. That is not a breach of a contract. That, that's actually silly for a lawyer to say, but nonetheless. What the law, there's case law that is very clear that attorney billing records, including that dealing with litigation. Which you had a lot of, are confidential. So because one person, one fifth of the council demands it, no, you're not gonna get it. It would take the whole body, just like it would be for any of you to breach attorney client privilege. It takes the whole body, which I told her, which she seems to take as somehow an impropriety. I told her the way to do it, it seems to have, uh, uh, caused her upset. Now what she also doesn't understand. Most of, well, thank you for laughing, it's always good, good humor. Uh, most of your consulting attorneys, as we came in here, we've got, found dozens of law firms. As the city code allows, I've brought them under my contract. So what you're seeing is the billing from a multiplicity of lawyers. You have lawyers like Kane Ballmer, you have Coleman Frost, you have a bunch of law firms out there. That now for efficiency, rather than the city getting multiple bills from multiple firms, they all route through me. And that adds up. And gosh, golly, yes, it's a big number because you've got an extraordinary amount of litigation. You've got an extraordinary amount of everything from C F D defaults up through a lot of real estate deals. So yes, for a city of this size with this size budget, those numbers are not startling. You can try to make them seem spooky and bad and evil, but that's just silly. That truly is the mark, not of a professional, but of someone who's trying to put a political spin on things. So we'll leave that there. Again, there is no reason for policymakers to dive into this. Just like with A Q and D. The board members are not the litigators. The board members, please respect my time. The board members are not those who are litigating. You didn't need lawyers on the board to be telling everybody what to do. That's again, a, a constant theme of overreaching outside of the council policy role. Down to staff administrative level. That's not what a council member's supposed to do. It seems an unusual thought to some, but that's the way it really is. There is no issue. Your staff has all the bills. Your staff has every accounting, every line item. That is their role. They review it, they check it. If they have questions, they ask. It's an administrative function. To make it seem like Palmdale has no idea what's going on is a flat falsehood. Your staff, your executives, your finance people, all of them, your code enforcement, everybody has full access to it. Because that's their job. So trying to overreach and butt in for whatever reason is really an unnecessary thing. And to now to try to make it some bad action, uh, it strikes me as laughable at best and, and. Sort of sadly unprofessional at worst.
Eric, would you like to, it looked like you were.
Yeah, and may God have mercy on my soul.
Alright.
I just want the public to know because allegation out there, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month. We had four attorneys on staff and nineteen attorneys contracted. That has gone to one firm. Uh, maybe there's a, a handful left of contracted attorneys, not very many, so this isn't one person putting two hundred thousand dollars in their pocket, it's. It's actually a, a reduction of overall cost, but I think the public and me quite frankly are tired at the back and forth between. The both of you, so I'm making the request that pu, in public meetings. All comments be made to the chair instead of back and forth to individually.
Great.
Okay, and I do believe we have a performance review coming up for city attorney. Um, so we can take a closer look and discuss some of those things there, but I think, uh, most people know that. Legal work, especially for a city as large as this, with this many projects going on, it's not inexpensive. There's a whole team of attorneys. That have to work on many legal issues for an entire city, so.
I'm not suggesting that it's inexpensive and I'm not suggesting as a city attorney, I, that, and please, I'm, I'm offended that he says that what she doesn't understand. Don't tell me.
We, we do have, I know, we have a performance review.
Final remark, don't tell me what I, I understand and what I don't understand. I know exactly what goes in or supposed to go in to those billings under your umbrella. But how can we possibly know if you don't produce it? Your contract requires that you provide full and unfettered access to your books and records. Why can't I see them? Why can't we as a council see them?
The contract says to the city and that's.
Right, that's, that's.
That's wrong, that's wrong.
Exactly, so they're provided to the administrative staff, which is their job. The council's policymakers, that is not their job. That is why we respond, that's why every city has it that way.
Not true, our neighboring city just told me that this was insanity that I have to go through this to try and get these records.
We do have a performance review, review coming up at our next meeting for city attorney, so we will dive into it.
So is that the council saying that they're not going to add it to an agenda, i, agenda so that we can get the information?
We already have city manager, don't we have a performance review for the city attorney coming up at our next meeting?
The mayor has requested that I agendize that for our next meeting.
Okay, and we'll discuss it there. So in the name of time, we're gonna move on to public comment. So we can give, uh, the, uh, folks here an opportunity to comment. Our city manager's report and then we'll move on to public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and Public. Uh, in the last couple weeks, we celebrated several events, uh, most notably. Uh, we've had some concerts at the Palmdale Playhouse, we've had a Yellin' Dog Park event, but more importantly, I wanna just focus at. And most recently, actually, we did a desert cleanup this past Sat, Sunday, Saturday, I apologize. The days are blurring together, uh, on Saturday as well as, um, some, uh, additional services, uh, related to our day of service and our seasons of service. That happened at the Arrow Building as well. Uh, upcoming events, we have, uh, Books and Barks, we have Desert Sands Playground Ribbon Cutting. That is a complete reimagination of the Desert Sands Playground brought to you by Measure A V, so we're very excited about that on Wednesday, February twenty eighth. We also have, uh, Public Safety Disaster Preparedness Expo that will be taking place at Legacy Commons on February twenty eighth. Which is Wednesday from six to eight. I really encourage the, uh, the community to come out to this. We've experienced quite a bit of. Water this year and, uh, some, some, what do they call it, atmospheric rivers that are new to us, so it's always good to. Know where you can get resources and how to be prepared in the event of emergency. Uh, and then we also, um, are celebrating three additional murals here in the city of Palmdale. Uh, some of those are already underway. And, uh, will be brought to you and we'll present them, um, as soon as they're painted here before everybody. They have gone to the Public Art Commission. And, uh, been approved there as well, so, uh, exciting stuff is happening. Um, and we also, I, I think I see some characters in the back that may want to just make, are they gonna make a comment of? What's coming to the playhouse?
To the mayor of Palmdale and the illustrious city council, I am the mayor of who? And we, Mrs. Mayor and I have an invitation for you. To the mayor and city councils, oh so grand, we extend an invitation hand in hand to a show that's Seussical. Across the land at Palmdale Playhouse, it's just as planned.
In the heart of our city with lights aglow, Seussical, we love to show. Where Horton, the elephant's kindness will flow and Whoville's charm in every note will grow.
The Grinch and the cat, they will make you smile. In this whimsical world, it's all worth the while. The Palmdale Playhouse is where we compile a story of wonder with that Seussian style.
So please do join us, it'll be a delight as day turns to evening and fades tonight. At Palmdale Playhouse, our spirits take flight for Seussical, the musical, a pure sheer delight.
With music and laughter and joy and glee, we hope you'll come watch with baited glee. In a world of Seuss where all can be free at Palmdale Playhouse, it's the place to be. The show opens March eighth.
I'll definitely be there with my grandkids, for sure.
I think we're all looking forward to it. We got our invitations here and, uh.
Love your costumes.
Yeah, great job on the costumes and the presentation. Palmdale Playhouse.
So there's many things going on, um, I won't attempt to follow that with much more, but you can always visit our website for a current list of events. And, uh, grand openings, ribbon cuttings and all, and we absolutely encourage everyone to follow us on social media. Uh, we've got some renewed interest there and a whole lot of information is going out that way, so please follow us. Like, share all the things and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Palmdale Playhouse, celebrating its thirtieth anniversary this year. Alright, who's gonna follow that, right? Alright, I think now. Alright, I think now we're ready to move on to public comments. Let's hear from the public.
We have Eugene Hernandez.
Alright.
First of all, I'd like to say that, uh, regards to Cancer Month, I'm also a cancer survivor. I have multiple melanoma and I've been, um, had that, had it since twenty ten. So I'm a survivor also. Um, regarding, uh, Ms. Magana's report, uh, the planning department, I wonder why the city of Palmdale doesn't take upon itself to do what the city of Lancaster did in preserving the prime, uh, prime desert woodland, you know? You, you keep appro- uh, approving more and more development, but the yucca trees that exist here are getting destroyed. And I, I think it would be nice to behoove the city for our children and other, um, visitors to see a, a three-mile-wide area preserved as the desert was before settlers came. And perhaps even have a museum telling the prehistoric history of why, why we're called Antelope Valley? Because there used to be antelopes here and there was even ancient cheetahs that hunted these, these, uh, these antelopes. And I think it would be a good, uh, a good project for the city to adopt. And as far as the la- uh, the, the labor of the attorney is concerned, now I know why he went to every single committee and gave an hour and a half presentation, page by page, word by word, uh, sentence by sentence, because he was double billing the city. It's very obvious that he's a con man, and I'm gonna write a letter to George Gascoigne to have him investigated because this is double dealing, double billing that I as a taxpayer resent. And he should have his law license removed. Thank you.
Can I make, can I make a comment to what he just said?
We'll comment after.
Okay.
We'll comment after, but I do, before I forget, I want city managers to give us a brief update on the Joshua trees on Avenue M. I've heard a lot of feedback from, um, from the community about that project. Can you elaborate on the preserve and how large that preserve will be on that site?
So they, there's several acres set aside on the, uh, corner of Tenth and M within that existing property to create a preserve of some of the trees that are, uh, being impacted by that development. In addition to this, we are currently wrapping up, I don't wanna say wrapping up, um, but we're close to, uh, bringing before you our first ever Parks Master Plan. And as we discussed with the Parks Master Plan process, we would allow that process to take place and allow it to identify the best locations or the best process forward for creating a preserve. So once that Parks Master, and this is the first one we've ever done in the history of the city of Palmdale. And it, as it wraps up here in the next couple of months, we will make the recommendations and seek approval from council to move forward with what type of preserve, where, when, size, location, everything of that nature.
Thank you. Ms. Beckford?
I just wanted to say that I really love the idea of museum, and I've been actually bringing that up for several years. Um, back in the day of Robert Alvarado, I don't know if you guys remember him or not, he, he's, he's a very nice man. He, he and I had also talked about getting a museum, celebrating the history of Palmdale, the ancient history all the way through to current. So maybe at a later date, we can talk about how we can get a museum, cause I, we're a very unique area. And there's, we have a lot of things to talk about, cause we have a very long history here, so. I just wanna say, Eugene, I love the idea of the museum.
Alright, thank you. Next, uh, next speaker?
Douglas Schmidt.
Hello, sir.
Hi. My wife and I came to Palmdale in nineteen eighty-nine. We raised our children here. We've worked here, we volunteered for several thousands hours over that time. This is not a stepping stone. It's for the next great place. I call this place home. Over time, the city grew and the, and had the associate, associated growing pains with it. Having, growing up in a political family in the sixties, the seventies, and the eighties, as my father was a county supervisor in Ventura County. And my mother is involved in many organizations. I can empathize with the, the work that you have to do. What I'm talking about takes vision, the vision that provides safe transportation for all, one that doesn't place one form of transportation over others. In the early years, when I was here, the streets were not crowded, but with growth, that has changed. Safe act- access for bicycles is minimal at best. We have seen improvements on the east side, and that's a step in the right direction. Studies have shown that the painted white line that we call a bike link actually increases the danger for cyclists and other users. Our roads need more than a white line to protect those who are not in cars. When separated bike lanes with physical barriers are in place, ridership increases. Research shows that increased riderships has a corresponding increase in economic growth for small, small businesses along the cycling lanes. I have the data and the research here for you if you need that. Uh, Palmdale has the opportunity to show this vision. As the number of e-bikes increase, please plan for the future. Please have a vision, protect our children, our grandchildren, to have safe segregated bike lanes. One life lost is too much. Have a vision that bike lanes often turn, return a better investment than adding additional traffic lanes. Have the vision to take advantage of the wonderful spring and fall season and invite others to discover Palmdale's cycling opportunities.
Thank you. Can you, uh, share that information with the clerk or, or provide, okay, I wish you can distribute to council? Thank you so much.
Sergio?
Evening, council, mayor. Um, I just wanted to bring up, um, some information about Avenue T. Um, wanted to, you know, see if there's any road or that's gonna be, uh, worked on the road, if anything's happening now in that Little Rock area? Forty-seventh to Seventieth?
Uh, yes. Can you answer that, please? Sorry.
Sure. In our, as part of our five-year capital improvement program, we have a project, um, earmarked for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year for design of the repavement of Avenue T. It's approximately a sixteen million dollar project with a one million dollar design cost. Um, those are, that's very rough numbers, uh, but we do have it on our radar.
And also to address the current, uh, condition of it?
Yeah.
Right, am I right that part of the, uh, pavement agreement was supposed to be with the, uh, granite company that's currently mining in the area? Am I correct?
Correct.
And they haven't upheld their end of the bargain, and so I've gotten a lot of comments about this recently. And I engaged the city manager and we're seeing what we can do, but we're gonna hold them accountable, we're gonna step up on our own, and we have.
So the five-year term agreement is twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four?
So we have what's called a five-year capital improvement program where we schedule projects over five-year periods. It's a rolling five years. This project is slated to begin, uh, with design and overlay and all the architectural and things like that in twenty fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five. So next fiscal year.
Um, cause I was trying to get a road inventory report also, cause that, that's what I was told for it to tell me exactly when the last time it was resurfaced or, cause I mean, they, they get, it does get patched. Um, I don't know, maybe once a month or something like that.
So we have something called a PCI Pavement Condition Index, and I will point you right over to Lynn Glidden, who's our Director of Public Works, and she can provide you all the information that you need, uh, to, so that we can work on the project.
Alright, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Alright.
Annabelle Farmer?
Hey, Annabelle.
Good evening. I came to talk about a dangerous situation. It's on Avenue R-five between Third Street and Fifth Street East. I think it's dangerous because there are no sidewalks. There is a twelve-foot easement on each side of the road for the purpose, the only purpose is to put in sidewalks. We've waited sixty-nine years now, and we still don't have them. And what happens is that it's an access road to the school. So the traffic is tremendous and it feeds R-four, R-five, R-six, R-seven, and part of Sumac, all those homes. They have to drive their children to school. There is no walking at all. Because of this, this problem, we have a handicapped gentleman that has a scooter, no place to ride it. He can go in the twelve-foot easements, but he's gonna come across rocks, fox tails, puncture weed. And when he gets out to Fifth Street, there's no cut down in the curb. There's a four-inch-high curb that he has to climb over because there is no handicap cut down. And I don't know what else I can say except to ask you to please consider, I think you were involved with Lark, with, with a, a street, um, by sixteen hundred Avenue R-four. And they just put in the sidewalk last year. And people are out there walking. Neighbors are meeting neighbors. Something that does not happen in my neighborhood. But I thank you for your consideration.
Absolutely. Can I refer you to Lynn Glidden from Public Works and, uh, she can give you some, yeah, she'll get you some more information. We'll take a closer look at that. I'm gonna pull it up online and I'll drive by there tomorrow and take a look at it.
Okay, great, great. I'll wave.
Thank you for your comment. I just wanted to, um, encourage staff to explore. There's a program and funding source, um, called Safe Routes to School. And we might be able to access, um, that funding, uh, specifically because you noted that that is, is an access route to schools and it's not ADA accessible, so just encourage staff to explore that opportunity.
Fantastic. Yeah, we definitely look into that.
Glenda Rowe? Glenda?
Uh, maybe she's outside. Yeah. She's gone? Okay, let's, alright.
Daniel?
Alright. And you're up.
That's upside down. Greetings, city council members. My name is Daniel Lago Marcino. I am the lead site representative for the Palmdale Aerospace Teachers Association. Uh, I speak tonight on behalf of our ninety-four members that work at the Palmdale Aerospace Teachers Academy. We are currently at a critical point in our negotiations. A state mediator has been appointed. And this might seem like a positive development, but the mediator has no power to compel a settlement. As such, we are not optimistic that, uh, a resolution will be reached, and we are prepared to be disappointed by our board, two members of which are appointed by this council. To prepare for this disappointment, we surveyed our staff. Ninety percent of our staff support striking to settle our contract. We don't want to, but the amount of attrition taking place at our school is damaging to our students, and we can no longer allow this to continue. The lack of respect and consideration we receive negatively impacts us, and we can no longer allow this to continue. A strike, however, is still avoidable. Our board is unelected, therefore they are unaccountable to us, our students, or the families we serve. We have increased public pressure on them from every angle to no avail. And so we turn to the agencies that can hold them to account. Councilmember Olson, uh, and De- Deputy City Manager Lopez, super distracting, have experienced how our board treats people. Uh, we deal with that level of disregard on a daily basis. Yeah, no stress. No worries. Uh, yeah, so councilman, cap- councilmember Olson and Deputy City Manager Lopez have experienced how our board treats people. Uh, we deal with that level of disregard on a daily basis. It is our sincere hope that unlike our school board, you choose to stand with those of us that teach and support students in Palmdale by helping us make our undemocratic and unaccountable school board see reason and settle this contract. You cannot put students first while putting educators last. If you would like to discuss this issue further, my email and phone number are on my public comment card. I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
So, real quick, so I wanna apologize for not recognizing you. As you know, I got kicked out of the meeting before I could memorize your face. Uh, but yes, I did attempt to attend the last meeting. I was asked to leave. Um, I'm very concerned about what's going on, and we've already had conversations and we're gonna be very engaged throughout the process.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, next comment.
Roger Sardistep?
Speaker.
Roger Sardistep?
How you doing?
Esteemed council, honorable citizens, Marxist agitators, and those who merely wish taxpayers money. I'm gonna lose a lot of friends by saying this, but I gotta agree with Ms. Alarcon about we need to know what everything costs. And this is not a general criticism. Most of the departments are real good about it in their presentations and their webpages. But some are, any information about the budget is completely missing. Like, what about the film office? How much does it cost? Where does the money come from? So I would like, in any presentation or webpage, I would like, what's the budget and where does it come from? And you don't need to go into every little detail. It won't take a lot of extra time, but it'd be nice if the public knew all this stuff. Some things you can only find by digging through a lot of menus. Some you can't find at all. And also, um, I found out that you can get a sidewalk if you whine, so I'm whining. My neighborhood's only two blocks from a shopping center. We could walk there. Oh, but there's no sidewalk on Rancho Vista, so. I want one too. If he gets one, I should get one too. Thank you.
Ran- Rancho Vista and what? Just so I know. Like, what area?
The Mobile Home Park.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. And real quick, somebody actually asked me about the budget last night, and they, they wanted me to send them a link to the agenda. I went to City Palmdale Meetings and Agenda. There's two agendas, the, the small one and the big one. If you open the link to the big one, it's like eight hundred pages and it goes through everything. You do have to go through, it is, you know. We don't announce, it's, it's hard. There's a lot of moving parts. You don't announce everything, but if you do go on the website and click the agenda link for this meeting, you'll find the full eight-hundred-page meeting with all the.
I read it until I fell asleep.
Exactly.
And, and every check that we write is also listed on the website, correct? There, there's nothing being hidden. Every check that goes out the door is made available on our website.
Under the check logs. Okay.
I think it's called a, is it a warrant list? It's not called, it's not called a checklist. I think it's called a warrant list.
The warrant register.
The warrant register, thank you.
Okay. Alright, next speaker.
Marcos Alvarez?
Good evening, folks, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I have to say that every time because not many of us get to do that, and not many citizens wanna do that. So as a taxpayer, um, I wanna say this, okay? Whether it be Ms. Alarcon, or Ms. Bettencourt, or even our mayor Bishop, anything of importance that if, that impacts the citizens that live in this community should not be stopped in, in speaking and say, uh, we've heard, we've heard enough on that subject matter. Because it's important to all of us. The gentleman who just spoke here and stole my thunder, it is important, and I get it, you're saying it's on the websites, but the average citizen doesn't come to these meetings. We learn each and every day how every cent, every million is spent in our community. And by doing so, we educate, and now I can say, okay, I'm really truly part of this community. Maybe one day I'll make an impact by getting involved the way we're doing today. So to say ample discussion as a means to end a conversation on a subject matter, I really think we need to think that through because no ample discussion is enough to improve a city we call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Chuck Murphy?
Hey, Chuck.
How is everybody?
Doing good.
I'll go along with one thing. There's a lot of stress in here today, a lot of stress. And I think we all need to take a deep breath and relax a little bit. But I wanna compliment our sheriff's department today. I got my first ticket since nineteen eighty-six. I'm complimenting it because it was, even though I could have argued about it, I didn't.
Free speeding.
No, absolutely not. A phone. They got me on a phone and they're pressing phones right now. And people are starting to move up to the, you know, I, I was actually talking on my, on the, the way I was supposed to, but I, he saw me with, put the phone down at the stop sign. Um, but my point is, is that Sheriff's Department's doing a wonderful job. You guys are doing some wonderful things here. And, and you hear me complain a lot, but I'm complaining about kids, just like the guy that was just up here. He's a teacher. We need our children taken care of, and I just hope that you'll always find that in the budget. Thank you very much. Have a great night. And everybody needs to breathe. I mean, seriously.
Thank you, Chuck.
When he told me he got pulled over, my response was, that's great.
Thanks, Chuck. You're a rock in the community. We appreciate you. And we're all here, like you said, because we care about the community. So we're all trying to do our best by the city and, and all of its residents, so thank you.
No more speaker cards?
No more speakers, alright. No more speakers. All right. I should have known Marcia was gonna speak.
Well, you know, you know how I feel about speaker forms that are not necessary to be able to come up and speak in front of you. You do not need to declare what you're going to speak about to anyone until you get behind this mic. So, um, I want to quick, just a couple of things out. The, um, time limits on speaking, the consent calendar, like today. Uh, the consent calendar appointment category, new business category, and closed session category are all under one heading, two minutes to speak on those. Now, I have been in meetings here where there have been over twenty items on the consent calendar. So it's bad enough that the time is limited, but as in the olden days, pre our last elected mayor, that was set at three minutes. The consent color was always at three minutes. And there was always individual speaking times for any particular new business appointments, uh, uh, reports. They all have their own speaking time limit category. I would like for you to implement a standard, set in stone, speaking time limit for each of those categories so that it is not at anyone in particular's discretion to limit our voices on the categories that we want to speak about. We want to know that our voice can be heard. And if you do not fill out those forms, the speaker forms, they will not know how many of you want to speak on a particular category and try to limit our speaking time that way. But I would like for you to consider going back to the olden days where everyone knew how much time they were gonna have to talk. I'm a cancer survivor for twenty years this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia.
I hope I live as long as you do, Marcia. Let us pray.
We haven't seen you in a while. I was, I was wondering.
Good evening, Council. Javier Flores.
Hello.
Um, it was very interesting to hear a gentleman that got up and spoke earlier and say that jokingly, of course, that he might create a lot of enemies for supporting a position that was being put forward by Councilwoman Elarcon. I just thought that was very, very telling. You know, she has a lot of detractors. We all know this, and some of them are sitting behind this dais tonight. And to the side of me as well. But, uh, she also has a lot of support, and you guys need to understand that. The disrespect you give her is taken personally by lots and lots and lots of us. And it's not just passing us by. We're not ignoring it. Uh, we're looking at every single thing you guys do, every single thing you guys say, and you're disrespecting of her continuously. Does it go at all? Just wanted you to, to know that. Ms. Elarcon, keep advocating. I'm happy. I very much appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Xavier. Anybody else? I think we're out of cards, but I'm not seeing anybody else who would like to speak. So with that, I'm gonna close public comment. And now, presentation by the city attorney.
We have two properly agendized closed session items, eleven-one and eleven-two. They actually somewhat interrelate. It is, uh, some federal litigation that's been, um, in action for quite some time. It might be coming close to closure. The firm representing the city on this will be presenting to you. So with that, we can recess to closed session.
Okay, Councilmember Alarcon had one quick question.
I just have one quick question. Some of the other, uh, my colleagues, uh, were asking questions of the city manager. I have one question. Has the state of California approved, uh, the city of Palmdale's seat, uh, on the JPA for the fairgrounds?
Uh, I inquired about that, uh, with the executive director and CEO of the fairgrounds about two weeks ago, and he is due a response to me any day now.
So it's that no thus far?
He said he needed to check on it. He didn't have an answer off the top of his head.
All right, we're gonna go to closed session. Announcement by the ci- city attorney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and loyal staff. Um, council was updated on both cases, but no reportable actions occurred. Back to you, sir.
All right, it's gonna bring us to the adjournment. Uh, next meeting's gonna be March sixth, twenty twenty-four, five P M, right here at City Hall. Thanks and have a good night.